It is 5:00. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, City of Victorville. City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and Victorville Housing Trust. Point of roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Proton McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. This would be the time for public comment. Normally, I would read this thing, but we have absolutely no one in the audience, and so I'll reserve this for the 7:00 meeting, since we have no one to speak, no one is here at this time. And at this point in time, then, I'll return, I'll ask that the city attorney give his presentation regarding the proposed closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have three matters for closed session this evening, one for the airport authority and two for the city council. Two of them are existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. They involve the case the SEC versus the City of Victorville. That is for both the airport authority and the city council, and the case number, and more detail is on the agenda. The third item is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 5495-7B, and that pertains to the evaluation of the city manager position. To the extent there's reportable action, we would report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the 7:00 meeting.
I have a comment and a question. The closed session is in regard to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.9D and D1. The grand jury issued a very lengthy report. City council responded, or the city staff responded. Was that the end of that? Does that close that chapter out? Was there a response back from the grand jury? What happens? Because I've had people ask me, are they still involved? Are they likely to be involved? Did they finish their work? Why didn't they respond to our comments?
The grand jury, as far as I understand it, finished their work. There's a new grand jury seated, and we've supplied a lengthy response, and there has been no counter-response to the city's response, as far as I'm aware, Doug. I don't know if you ever heard anything different than that?
No, I haven't had any response at all from the grand jury. I think it's done, it's over, as far as I understand.
Yeah, the matter's essentially closed. That grand jury has finished its work, and now there's a different, new grand jury seated.
They moved on.
That was always my belief. I wanted to make sure that that was correct. At this point in time-
Mr. Mayor, have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Who gets credit for the redesign of the agenda?
Staff, Carol Lee.
I have to tell you, I found it really much easier to read, and I like it, I'd like to say so.
I concur.
I think they got tired of me getting confused. Tried to help me out.
There were several influences into the decision-making process, yes. Actually, it'll be very nice for an item, some future item, when it's on multiple, would have been on multiple agendas, it'll be listed under a single agenda item number, and then an A, B, C, D, such as the budget, would have been one item with one staff report, and then, you know, six or seven resolutions as one item that could be approved all at once.
Well, initially, where you have an item, and then combined with that, you can open up a hearing or talk about two other items, seven and 13 combined, it's okay until it gets confused because of the public input or the staff report. And so by putting it this way, they will handle that as it comes up, they'll be handled individually, the vote will be on the individual ones, and I think it'll be helpful to everyone. So, staff, thank you very much for that change. With that, we will adjourn to closed session at 5:04. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order at this time. We had a closed session at 5:00 PM, and Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report from the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had three closed-session items, one for the airport authority and two for the city council. Two of the matters pertain to existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. The names of the cases are set forth on the agenda. There is no reportable action with respect to those items. We also had a closed-session item for the city pursuant to government code 5495-7B, public employee performance evaluation related to the city manager, and at this time, there's no reportable action on that item either.
All right, thank you very much. I will go through this again. This is the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville, and the city council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. So, could I have a roll call from the city clerk, please?
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
And McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. At the present time, I would like to ask the Minister Kao Ying Ling from the Victorville Church of Christ to come up and give the invocation. Is he here? Thank you, sir. And well, after the invocation, please remain standing, and our Victorville Police Chief, Sam Lucia, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as we come to you, we're mindful of our responsibilities to this community, to you, and to those that are here tonight, representing our council and representing those that have interest in the various issues. Father, we pray for the kind of wisdom and understanding to carry out our conduct in a Christ-like manner. We pray, Father, that we're always aware of our responsibilities, we are present to carry out those responsibilities. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity to serve our community and to each other. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity to reach out and to help one another. We pray, Father, for your guidance in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
...........................................................................
We do not have any special presentations at this time. We normally have some proclamations, and we do not. Madam Clerk, are there any revisions to the agenda?
There are no revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per government code section 54954.3. State law prohibits the city council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and may set the matter at a subsequent public hearing. We request that the comments be limited to three minutes per individual, or less if possible. Depending upon the number of individuals, if we have a large public hearing and we have a large number of people, sometimes they will choose a spokesperson, rather than having 10 or 15 people speak on the same item, and in those instances, we allow longer time, but to ensure that everyone gets heard and that we get through the meeting, we like to keep it to three minutes. I have received several cards. I am going to call those individuals the way that I have received them. And if you will come forward, April, first individual's April Pingston?
Yes, April Pingston. Hello. I'm a little nervous. It's been a while since I've been here, and I'm just really have been concerned with where our country is going, and I know that some people think, well, this isn't the country, this is the city of Victorville. Well, the Lord has laid you on my heart to pray for you, and Ryan, and Angela, and Doug, as I feel like I know you, the rest of you, I pray for you as a whole, and I pray that God gives you the wisdom to lead this city. And you know that I was previously actively involved in city council meetings, but lately I've just become totally oblivious to what's going on within the city itself. However, I am firmly aware of what is going on around the country as far as our Constitution, and that it's being shredded every day. And I know that a lot of cities have taken stands and said that if the federal government comes down with any laws that violate the Constitution, they will not enforce it or uphold them. And I don't know if you guys have even considered this, but my main issue is the gun issue. Now, I own as many guns as I want, and as many guns as I need. However, I know that the current resident of the White House and the current resident in Sacramento, they're shredding the Constitution, and I'm just asking if you guys will think of this and consider this, if and when, not if, because it's coming, when the issue is addressed. Because as I said, as far as gun confiscation, they're making it more and more difficult to buy guns, but like I said, I have as many as I need and as many as I want, it's just ammunition is a little bit low. And I'm hoping that you guys will, ladies and gentlemen, will consider this if the government does come down and say, you know, X, Y, Z, we're going to do this, and that as a city of Victorville, what your action is going to be as far as that is concerned. Because it's my understanding that you took an oath, when you swore into office, that you would uphold the Constitution and defend her, and I'm just asking for that consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next individual is Bud Giboney? Giboney? Sorry about that. Following this individual, Mr. Giboney, Yvonne Meschek, and you can get prepared so that we won't have a long wait. Welcome, Mr. Giboney.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say a few things about Old Town, 7th Street. How many more times, I've been here 27 years, and how many more times are we going to fix up Old Town down close to D Street and watch it be destroyed again and again and again? If you know anything about the city of Permona, or any of the cities in San Diego, which had been restored a number of times and wasted money on it, it ended the same way as what we've got now, and if you're going to spend more money, what are you going to put down there to keep people from stealing trees, taking plants, or just basically drugs and those kind of things? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Yvonne Meschek?
Good evening. I'm here again to speak to you about the library. The street is really terrible. I know it's supposed to be a private road, and I want to know why you can't do some eminent domain and charge this person that owns the street to fix it so that we can at least drive our cars over there, or move the facility. I know that some of you feel that, you know, the people that live in the downtown area need that library, but we need it too. And I shouldn't have to drive to Apple Valley or Hesperia to go to the library so I don't tear up the shocks and the tires on the car. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Vale?
Mr. Mayor, as Joe walks down, I would like to respond that there are a couple of other roads that you can get to the library. It requires you to turn a little bit earlier. There's new signage in place that directs our residents to those roads now.
My name is Joel Vale, and I'm here concerning item number B1. As I've addressed you the last couple of meetings, I feel that this election is being held in a way that is unfair. The people who have moved in here since the 1972 ordinance to try to bypass Prop 13, they are told that they will be getting a tax deduction or reduction, and all the people who were here prior to that, that you claim were not part of the lighting district, which is true, but at the same time, all of our tax dollars being paid came to Victorville, and it was paid out of the general fund, is my understanding. And the money that came in was from us taxpayers to pay for those lights, so we are paying and have been paying for the lighting. And according to my understanding, we have 712 parcels that were voted yes by the city council. Those parcels belong to me. I voted no. You have approximately 20,000 parcels inside the 1972 area. Those are the only people who should be voting on this issue, not the 20,000 parcels outside of this area that are voting probably yes in order to lower their assessments, and I think this voting process that you're doing is incorrect.
Thank you, Joe Vale. I wasn't about to interrupt you when you got started, but we are going to have a public hearing on B1, which is the next item, and you can speak again on that. For those individuals who have filled out a card indicating they want to speak on B1, they can speak now, or when we open the hearing, you can speak at that time. It's your choice. We prefer, and I'm sorry, Mr. Vale, I apologize, that you speak at the public hearing, which as soon as we get through these cards, we're going to get to. The next individual, Joan Alman, is B1. Would you like to wait on speak at B1, or no? Dorothy Miller, you have B1. Want to wait just, you want to speak now, or want to wait in the public hearing? Okay. Larry Huber, B1. Eric Cordell, wait. Dorothy Miller again, D3, that's a different one, we'll get to that. Dorothy Miller, D11, we will get to that and call you again. Robert Bixler, you will speak on, oh, wait, thank you. Barbara Powers, just says public comment. Here we go. Issue?
Good evening, council. It's good to see everybody. I wanted to talk about Old Town, and I want you to know, the committee to know, that we are having two meetings a month, and I suggest that anyone who has questions about Old Town should come to the meetings. There's one on Tuesday, the next one is the 23rd, and it's 6:00 PM at the Little Country Kitchen. So, that's the next meeting. And we, this is the exciting part for us, is we have an Old Town Victorville website. It's OldTownVV.org, and it is a website, which will connect you with the Facebook, and we're very excited about it because there are enough things going on, and we're getting a lot of input from Old Town, as we have for the whole year. Working with Old Town, we always get people who want to know. So, the other issue I want to bring up is that there was a woman on C and 7th, she was almost barely, the Lord saved her, let's put it that way, because there was speeding again, going down the street, she was crossing at the crosswalk, and the one car came to a screeching halt, and another car veered to the left, and it was a terrible scene, but she made it, so praise God. But I would like to see, I would like to ask if a sheriff would at times come to check the speed on C, well, that's actually 7th Street, because I know we've got a lot of signs up and things like that. It's not happening. People are getting close calls, very close calls. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the date of that meeting, the 23rd? 23rd of this week, of this month?
I'm sure the city clerk has those dates in regard to the meetings, and if you would just make sure that the council is made aware of those meetings?
And you can go to the website, and all of that's there on OldTownVV.org. OldTownVV.org.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lowe?
Good evening to the mayor, city manager, and members of the city council of Victorville, and more importantly, to the person that matters most in the world I walk in, Captain Sam Lucia of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department Victorville Station. First of all, I would like to affirm what this woman here, Pingston? Mrs. Pingston, instead, about our constitutional rights. We're all mature enough, and if we're paying attention enough, and you watch over the span of time, you will see how insidiously and how unknowingly, the public unknowingly, our rights are being eroded. I'm not particularly a proponent of guns or gun control, but I am a proponent of the Constitution. Currently, I have a civil harassment restraining order that expires in about a year and a half from now, and let me assure you, the day, the very day that order expires, I'm going to go out and arm myself. I have not owned a firearm since 1993 because my daughter was two at the time, and I didn't feel that was safe because California's very tough on those kinds of issues if children are injured. Also, there was a woman who just spoke about a traffic issue. I live at the corner of Mesa Linda and Eucalyptus. When I moved there in 1998, it was a two-way stop, north and southbound, a two-way stop. Some years ago, maybe eight years ago or more, some ridiculous teenagers, including a 15-year-old girl, who my question was to the police was, where was her mother that night? They ran the two-way stop, and there was construction going on of homes right behind my house at that time, and there was a big city, I'm sorry, a big cement sewer pipe, and they plowed right into that, and I think there was three or four people, and they will never be the same. Yeah, drunk driving was involved, minors were involved, but nonetheless, I have pounded on the PD, every deputy I run into that stops somewhere. Can we please get some enforcement at Mesa Linda and Eucalyptus? It's a four-way stop. I sit it out there in the evening between 5:00 and 9:00 PM, and I watch car after car after car blow through that four-way stop, anywhere from 30 to 60 miles an hour. And going back about eight years, I had just gone to work, custodian for the Atlanta School District, worked night shift, and my husband called me and said, you won't believe this, about, I don't know, 50, 60 feet of our privacy chain link fence had been knocked down by somebody who jumped the curb and drove about halfway, I have a half-acre lot, about halfway into my yard.
You have 10 seconds.
How much?
10 seconds.
Well, I have a letter I need to read, so let me get on with it.
Well, wait, 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 now, we've announced before, you have three minutes. We're going to do everything I can to accommodate you, but you can't dominate this. We have a lot of people here at a public hearing. Can you submit the letter?
But you also said that you request, that you also stated at the beginning, it was a request to three minutes. If we would dispense with this conversation, I can be done in less than two minutes.
You have a very lengthy letter there, and we're doing our best.
It's not very lengthy.
You just showed it to me.
It's not very lengthy, and I feel it's necessary to continue.
Uh...
I'm asking for some leeway.
I'm not going to argue with you. I will allow you additional time, but you've, please, got to wrap this up. Please.
Okay. I've been a homeowner in Victorville since 1998. I moved here to escape the suburban rat race of the San Bernardino area and raise my only child, then age seven, in a more rural environment. I selected the home that I resided in based on the location. I wanted a larger home in the Golden Triangle, but chose the smaller one because I had at that time a complete unobstructed view of the San Bernardino Angeles mountain range. Well, that ended in 2007, when the city, in its infinite wisdom, allowed two-story homes to be built right behind my home. In addition to this affront, the municipal code of Victorville states that there is to be no construction vehicles, workers, et cetera, on the job site before 7:00 AM. I can't tell you how many times I got up in the middle of the night, 4:00 AM, and went back there and chased them out of the area. Sometimes the yellow flashing lights would come streaming through my bedroom window. I work until 10:30, and needless to say, didn't appreciate this at all. So eventually, some of my neighbors and I appeared at a council meeting here, 2007 or '08, and I spoke on our behalf. I even submitted photos of the truck traffic booming down the street, and you know what the council said? Not one word, just a cold, frigid stare. And my photos were never returned to me by the city clerk. And my photos were never returned to me by the city clerk. So needless to say, the message it sends to the citizens of the Victorville is this, that money in the city coffers is more important than the overall welfare of this community. Now, let me address another blatant offense by this city. Our local law enforcement and fire services are grossly lacking, as the city has grown by about 30% in the last six years, and the current infrastructure does not support this growth. Again, degree to the city, you know, building permits, inspections, tax revenues, et cetera. I have spoken recently with some of the local PD administration and told them of my intent to support them by bringing this to your awareness. Believe me, they are most grateful. These deputies are backed up to the nines with calls for service, and they are at times unable to document their incident reports correctly. I have in the past been up at the PD with my hair on fire over inaccurate, incomplete, and sometimes completely wrong information in their documentation, which on occasion has caused me to open an Internal Affairs against said deputy. But how can you blame them? They are overworked and underpaid for the stress they are put under daily. It is only a matter of time before the city or cities or sheriff's department will get sued because someone really screwed up. You can also be rest assured that the stress the sheriff's department is under will have a negative health effect on its members and will also possibly cause improper treatment to the public. For the record, I stand steadfast behind anyone who wears the green and the tan, anytime, anyplace, 24/7. Now, with regards to the city ballot item for tax reassessment on the ballot issue, this is what I say, and I hope the rest of the public will see through this little escapade, which is designed to correct the many financial faux pas of the city. I vote no on the reduction in the assessment. Because why? Once again, the city got ahead of itself and allowed all of this residential and commercial building to take place, and therefore, I'm sorry, they now want the homeowners' taxes to pick up the slack. The bottom line is this, when there is a money problem, whether in business or one's personal life, and everyone starts with the never-ending whining about the lack of money, here is the real answer nine times out of 10. It's not a lack of money, but it's the mismanagement of money that is at the root of the problem. Signed off, your citizen who can't wait to either sell or rent her house and get the hell out of this hellhole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Just make it brief. My main concern is, well, I had two concerns, but my main concern was with, I guess you'd call it, city maintenance. I just, I moved here five years ago and new track, and it's, I've never seen a city that, you know, doesn't do anything. It's, I mean, we've got, you can't walk down the streets, the sidewalk, there's a lot of places because they overgrow the weeds. Some are residential owners, but some are city. There's, you know, trash all over the place. People dump trash all over the place. That was my main concern with that. My, you know, it brings down the value of my home in a new neighborhood. And the other is traffic, too, is the average speed, a residential street is supposed to be 25 miles per hour, but the average speed on that street's probably, and there's no signs anywhere at the beginning or at the end of the street, that, and it's a main thoroughfare, I understand, but the main speed there is probably about 70 miles an hour, average person driving down the street. And a lot of them are passing through. They're not, they don't live there, they're going to another area because it's a main thoroughfare. But I've asked, talked to people at City Hall before and the police department about maybe some patrol or some kind of signs or something, because something's going to happen there, too. And there's a lot of children in the neighborhood, and, you know, I'd hate to, something happened when you think they could do a little patrolling or put a sign up or something, you know? But that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The other individuals, cards that I have, I've indicated that they would hold their comments until we go into the next item. The next item on the agenda is B1. This is a public hearing, a call to hear the arguments for and against the formation of the citywide assessment district, determine whether a majority protest exists, and three, if no majority protest exists, the adoption of resolution number 13013. Before we begin on this maintenance, street lighting district, Doug Robinson, would you please briefly, for the benefit of the audience, what the public, what we're doing here at the public hearing, what's to be accomplished?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. The item tonight is a public hearing. Certainly, the public's comments are welcome, but the comments will not affect the outcome of the election. The way they affect the outcome of the election is by voting. At the close of the public hearing, when the council closes the public hearing, is when the voting period stops and our staff will begin to count the ballots. So although your comments are welcome, they don't affect the outcome of the election. Ultimately, we do not anticipate having all of the ballots counted this evening. We've got over 5,000 envelopes, I believe, that we have not opened, and we believe it will take at least a day or maybe two or three days. Once we have that completed, then we will contact the city council to schedule a special meeting in order to give the results of the election and have ultimately some final resolution to the matter.
Thank you. Any questions of staff and council members?
At this point in time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Several people have filled out cards to give testimony and comments to the council. The first card that I have, Joel Vale, do you want your testimony earlier to stand? Do you have any further comments?
After the last council meeting, I called the city clerk's office, well, the city manager's office, trying to find out what I had to do and what papers I had to file or whatever, to file an injunction of some type to stop this election taking place and allowing people to vote who should not be voting. So I guess my question, being a city attorney, what are the papers that I would need to file to file with the court to make sure that only the people who are being told to pay money who've already been paying are the ones voting pre-19, excuse me, pre-1972?
You would have, you have a period of time within which to appeal any final decision of the council, but I would recommend that you go and consult with an attorney to get the specifics of what your rights would be. I can't advise you on a client's.
I know my rights, so I just want to know what the forms are.
You have, you have an appeal period of at least 30 days after the completion of the resolution.
But you won't tell me what the forms are.
Sorry?
You won't tell me what the forms are.
Well, I haven't, you should be advised by legal counsel if you're choosing. I represent the city.
Mr. Mayor, a question before Ms. Almond speaks. Am I right in my understanding that Proposition 218 passed by the people of this state statewide requires that for this kind of a tax or an assessment or whatever it is, is required to go before the people as a vote?
That's my understanding, but I want to defer to the manager who's from.
Citizens have a constitutional right to vote on this.
Yes, that is the purpose of the election.
Okay. Hi, Joanne.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's so great to be on this side. I'm here tonight, I just have one or two concerns. The first concern, the rumor is going on, if this thing doesn't pass, our streetlights will be turned off at midnight. And in my opinion, you turn off all our streetlights at midnight, that's like waving a green flag in front of every little gangbanger and every little troublemaker in this city. I hope it's not true, but that is the rumor that's going around, that the lights will be turned off at midnight if this doesn't.
That is not true.
That's not true.
That is not true.
Okay, that, I'm glad to hear. That was one of the concerns.
And I hate to interrupt, but there was a discussion, a very early report from staff, that insufficient revenues to pay the expenses that are now, were accruing from the streetlighting district, and that's one of the considerations of turning off some of the streetlights. I think there was three recommendations from staff, as I recall. That was one. But I have heard also, the reason I'm speaking of this, I got a phone call, that staff is threatening to shut the streetlights off at midnight, and neither staff nor council or anyone associated with the city has made that comment that I know about. I don't think it's, I don't think anyone did. I don't know where the rumor got started, but I think it's unfortunate because it is just not true.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, let me expand on that a little bit. If the election should fail, the council will have likely three options to consider. One would be to turn the lights off at an earlier time than they currently are. I don't know that anybody knows what that time might be. Or to turn off some of the lights, so that there's not as many lights lit, until we can bring the amount of electricity usage down to the fees that are currently collected. Or that one option that would be considered is to cut some other programs and fund the streetlights from a different funding source that would necessarily impact some other services the city currently provides. So, but that decision, none of those decisions have been made. Ultimately, when those options were presented to the city council, they wanted to take it to the voters first, to see if the voters would support this tax so that no services have to be cut.
Okay, and the other thing is, I live in cul-de-sac, and there's a streetlight at the end. Excuse me. That light goes off for a while, and then it'll come back on. Are we saving money by doing that somehow, by turning it off? And I notice it's not just that cul-de-sac, as I'm going down the streets, on streets. The first time I saw it, it scared the heck out of me. I was coming home from city council and the light went off. But I noticed that they do go off and on. Is that a program that's?
It's not a program, Joanne. I live at the end of a cul-de-sac myself, not terribly far from you, actually. And there's a variety of reasons why that might be happening. It could be some light infiltration, if there's a lot of porch lights on, the sensor that senses when it could, should be shutting on and off could be getting confused, or cars drive by at just the right time. There's also heat issues potentially. Sometimes the lights will heat up and they'll shut themselves off. Obviously, there's no way for myself or the council to know about your specific streetlight. I suggest that you talk with someone in either Public Works or Engineering to ask what there's, what might be happening with your streetlight, to see if anything could be changed.
Okay.
Just let me know where it's at. We'll make sure it's taken care of. We'll have someone check it.
I was just curious, because if that saves money, that's not too bad, because it's off for a while, and then it comes back on.
I, my understanding is.
If somebody's breaking in the house when it comes on, they should be scared to death, yeah.
But they do that, and you're not the only person that's raised that concern, that they will shut off, and I'm told it's because they heat up. But we, if we can locate those lights, we'll have it checked. These are the property of Edison. We will forward it to them, and they will check it for us.
Okay, my yellow light's flashing. I have one more question. Is this going to affect in any way the streetlights?
Traffic signals? The street?
The streetlights.
This is about the streetlights?
I don't mean the lights. I'm talking about the traffic lights.
Oh. Traffic signals? A small portion of this fee would go towards maintenance of those signals, to the extent that they have streetlights as part of the poll. And it would, that would then free up some dollars for, to be put into road maintenance. That is a very small portion of this fee, yes.
Hopefully, it'll affect the red camera lights, too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Huber?
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. I'm kind of speaking for Mark Ward also, he couldn't be here. We have about 70 parcels. We are not opposed of the street lighting. We're opposed of the paying for the red flag cameras and traffic signal lighting system. We are not opposed to street lighting. And when staff gave two reports, one before new members are on, and afterwards, you never mentioned about other lighting, other than street lighting. I have never read what the percent is of the red flag cameras and the street lighting maintenance or whatever, or the camera lightings that are stoplights. So that's never been proposed or never been in the paper that I know of. So, and I also had renters get ballots. Now, that's just a little bit illegal, to have renters get ballots. So something isn't quite right here. So, I mean, they shouldn't be voting on this. The owners should. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, there's, none of these dollars, should it pass, would go towards the red flag cameras or anything having to do with the red light cameras at all?
Right, and I think, I think there's a misunderstanding to your point. There are streetlights on top of actual existing traffic signals?
Correct.
And those are the lights that we're talking about? They're not actually paying for the functionality of the traffic signal lights?
There may be a small portion, actually. I would ask Sean McGlade to come down to address that question, perhaps at the end of the public comment.
At the end of the public comment period, Sean?
With regard to how much that percentage is.
Okay, because I, I know that there are streetlights on top of those.
Yes, there are streetlights on top.
Okay. And then the other thing is, and I, someone addressed me about this earlier, about renters getting these ballots. And the problem is, is that that's not the city's purview. That's, we get that from the assessor's role, do we not?
Bernardino County Assessor's Office.
So if you, if there, if there are issues with where the ballots went, unfortunately, by law, we have to abide by the assessor role. So if there's problems with the assessor role, that goes to, you know, San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors and the assessor. Unfortunately, we don't have a choice. If we go out to an election, it has to go to that role.
That's correct.
But the ballot goes to the address, not to a person? Am I right?
Yes, it's by assessor's parcel number. Yes, it's the property.
We don't know if there are renters in the house.
That's, we don't.
Not by the assessor's number, not by the address, by the parcel number.
But whoever's paying the property tax, that bill should be going to whatever their address is.
That's correct.
So if there's a renter in there, if their property tax bill's going to that home where that renter is renting, then that's a problem with the owner and the assessor, not the city. That's my point, is that we have no control over where those bills go or where the ballots go, because the assessor's role, if it's not correct, it's not on the city.
Did the renter vote, or did he give the ballot to you? Good.
Dorothy Miller. Yes, we have quite a few little problems. I feel that this thing is nothing but a big disaster for the city. This voting on this lighting situation, it's a disaster. The things that's been sent out to the people are not right. So why would you vote for something that's not right? Somebody should have checked all this out before they sent those notices out. And I just feel this is absolutely out of control. I feel the people, it's done this. Now, Mr. McGlade met me in the back here and said, somebody was supposed to call me and let me know that mine has been changed. Well, wait a minute. I'm not talking just for mine. I'm talking about everybody in the area that has theirs messed up. And I feel that this thing needs to be taken care of. It needs to be right, not wrong. You don't send ballots and voting things and everything to people when things are not right. I mean, I can prove it, and I will. If this thing passes, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to the media. I'm going to push this thing as far as I can go. I don't want to do that to the city, but if I have to, I have to, because this is out of control, and I feel the city manager, I talked to him, I talked to Mr. McGlade, I did everything I could do before I had to go to the mayor. And that's pretty sad. And he has been the greatest help to us on this situation. And I still feel that people should just step back and say, no, I'm not going to pay for something I don't get any benefits out of. Why? Am I stupid? I don't think so. I think things that's going on right now with this city is wrong, and it needs to be taken care of, and it needs to be taken care of properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Mayor, council members, my name's Eric Cordell. I'm a resident of Victorville, been here five years, new own a home. I looked at my property tax bill when I got this, and I didn't see, I didn't know if it was a separate item, but I didn't see any indication that I was being billed at the time. And I'm here in support of the measure, mainly for safety issues, because when the sun goes down, the bicycles, skateboards, basketballs don't mysteriously disappear from the streets and sidewalks in my neighborhood. And I moved from rural Oregon, and for 12 years, between our house and barn, we had a, what they called a security light, which is basically a streetlight. And that was installed, it was wired before the meter, so we paid no electricity on it. And they charged us $20 a year for that, one streetlight, and we had no problem with it because, you know, it was, we had a switch on it, we could turn it off. it, because, you know, it was, we had a switch on it, we could turn it off, watch the stars. But we paid for 12 years, and this is prior to the five years I've been here in Oregon, which we thought was a really good deal. My only concern is that in the assessment proposed, it states that it can be increased due to the cost of living tied to the Consumer Price Index and the increase in electricity, which is reasonable, because this is, as I understand, a revenue-neutral item. But the only thing I don't see is if miraculously the price of electricity does go down, or something else does go down, does that also have the effect of lowering it? Because it doesn't address, it only addresses increases. Not being a lawyer, I don't know if the strict interpretation is, it can only go up, but if prices go down to meet neutral revenue, it would decrease.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cordill. At the end of the public, at the end of the public comment, we're going to answer that, because it's a good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Dorothy Miller, D.3, D.3, sorry. Norman Miller, D.11. Robert Bixler, D.1, this is public hearing. Mr. Bixler?
Yes, sir. If I understood correctly a moment ago, because of the ballots that came in yet tonight, and are not able to be counted until later, whatever I have to say is, Nolan, doesn't make any difference. Is that correct, sir? Is that what I heard you say?
The ballots are what makes the determination on the election, not the public comments. Certainly, the public is welcome to comment, but it doesn't affect the outcome of the election. We, in fact, have not, by law, have not been able to count ballots until the public hearing closes. So our staff, although they're ready to start counting, they are prevented from doing so until after the public hearing closes. So once this item is over and done, and the council closes the public hearing, then they'll begin counting the over 5,000 envelopes that we've received.
Okay. I do have one thing to say about this. I voted no on this resolution for one reason, and only one, and that was that you wanted me to give you an open bank account, that every year you could go for a cost of living increase. I don't know very many people, and in 35 years, I worked for Southern California Edison, I didn't get a cost of living increase every year. I'm on Social Security now, and I don't get one of those either. Some years I get it, some years I don't. So I think if you just set a lighting district, and in five years from now, you come back to us and say, "Okay, we have found this is not sufficient," then you should bring that back to us and say, "Okay, then we'll allow you to raise that." But to put this into this proposition, and ask us to give you a blanket to every year, add to this thing, without us not knowing the cost of what is really going on here, we need to know that cost before we say to you, "Okay, you can raise the amount." Because the way I see it, you have asked us for an open bank account. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bixler. That concludes the cards that I have, but we have a couple of questions. And so, while I, we still have the public hearing open, it concludes the speakers.
Brian Gengler, our city engineer, is going to come down and answer those questions.
And also the question that the gentleman asked about, if the costs go up, what happens if the costs go down? It's a good question. You know, there's a lot of things that could happen in the energy world. Is it possible, then, the costs that'd be assessed go down also? Good question. Someone needs to answer that, staff.
Members of council, and staff, and the public. The engineers' report didn't specifically address the adjustment of the cost, but every year, an engineers' report needs to be prepared and take into account the costs to the district. And so, to answer the question, yes, the costs could go down if there was a negative CPI, if there was a lowering of the electric rates, the costs could be adjusted downward. And then, regarding the other question about traffic signals, there are over 300 safety lights that are on the signals themselves, but the cost for the district would be 50%. It'd pay for 50% of the electricity costs and maintenance costs for the signals. And then the other part would be paid for out of Measure I, which is the current funding source for the traffic signals. But there is a component of lighting for the signals, as well as the electricity for the signals themselves.
Any other questions, staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Cox, so that the record's clear, could you formally close the public hearing?
I am going to formally close the public hearing at this moment, since there's no questions of staff.
That way the counting can commence. Thank you.
So the counting starts now?
Yes, the staff will begin tabulating the ballots now, and assuming that they are not going to finish counting all of them tonight, they will commence counting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. in the same location, in the foyer, in case any of the public would like to observe the counting process. It'll continue until it's completed, and then if the council can choose to call a special meeting to announce the results of the election, or if you choose to adjourn tonight's meeting to next Tuesday, you could do that as well.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Assuming that staff, we've closed the hearing, and the staff starts counting, I'd be interested when we conclude the meeting, where they're at in the process. It might help us in making the decision.
If you would like to take maybe a brief recess at the end of the agenda?
At the very end, we'll do that.
And then we can check on the progress.
Hopefully, not more than five minutes or so?
Right.
And then we'll come back and determine, when we come back into session, to rule on that election thing.
Right.
So until they count, there's no adoption to occur? There's no resolutions that can be approved or disapproved? It's an open, it's a continued item then, until the ballots are counted?
Correct.
Is that correct? Very good. The next item on the City Council is B.2. It's a public hearing to hear arguments for and against granting a certificate of public convenience necessity to Premier Medical Transportation, Inc., for a non-emergency medical transportation business, as set forth in Resolution Number 13-42. There is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any cards for B.2. Is there anyone here to speak on that particular item? There apparently is not. I am going to close the public hearing. Any questions of staff? If not, open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the City Council agenda is the Consent Calendar. C.1, Request City Council Approve Commercial Land Schedule in the Amount of $2,239,543.78. And C.2, Request City Council to Release 100% of the Faithful Performance of Labor and Material Securities for the Street Improvement, Walgreens SP-06-016 at the southwest corner of Beverly Road, near Muthus Road. Those, both items can be taken as one item under the Consent Calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Written Communications, Item D.1, my. All of these can be taken as one item, City Clerk?
No, these are all to be acted upon separately.
Each one, all right?
Yes.
Item D.1, Request City Council to Accept California Department of Resources Recycling Recovering CalRecycle City Council Recycling Grant Funds in the Amount of $32,000.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D.2, Under Written Communications, Request Victorville Water District Board of Directors Approve the Annual Purchase Order Request for Mojave Basin Area Water Master for Quarterly Water Production Reports and Invoices for Administrative and Biological Assessment for Fiscal Year 2013-2014 in the Amount of $105,000.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number D.3, Request Victorville Water District Board of Directors Approve the General Service Provider Agreement and Annual Purchase Order Request for Univar USA, Inc., for Well Site and Water Treatment Chemicals Supplies and Disinfection for Fiscal Year 2013-14 in the Amount of $99,000.
Mr. Mayor, just a question.
Question.
Are we still doing arsenic wellhead treatment? And are these chemicals part of that? We still have to do that, Sean? Or are we blending?
In fact, we're kind of in the transition. We're taking ORCubed water.
Okay.
And so, we're monitoring everything very closely, just to see what's going to happen to the arsenic levels.
So we're not having to treat?
We're still treating right now, but obviously, with time, with more of the water getting blended into the system. We're not taking, if you like, the full amount yet. There's still some teething problems that we're going through, but ultimately, when we take the full allocation of ORCubed, we believe that we will not need to treat for arsenic.
Good. Thank you.
Before the action of the council, Dorothy Miller has had a card request to speak on D.3.
I was informed that the treatment plant, the arsenic treatment plant that Baldi Mesa had put in, is only running at half now. It's not running full. And the city manager's the one that told me this. Now, I feel if the thing is not needing all the chemicals, why is it still full bore on our water bills? We're still paying for the full bore of chemicals that we're not supposed to have to use if we're only using it half-time, and pretty soon, it's supposed to go completely off. Now, I don't know if that'll ever happen, because of the way things are going around here. I don't really trust anything anymore. Until things get straightened out, and things start going in the right direction, we're up a creek without a paddle. So we need to get help in here. We need somebody that understands what's really going on and take care of the problem. We've got one person that's handling water, Public Works, you name it. He handles it all. Lighting, you name it. Now, one person can't handle everything. Now, I don't care who it is. It needs to be taken care of. It needs to get people in there that can handle it, and then things wouldn't go out like these ballot things we got, that's really all messed up. And it's not just mine, but I'm a hollerer, so mine will be taken care of. No, everybody's need to be taken care of. I mentioned two or three other names that is wrong, that I know about. And I was informed, there's a lot more. So we need to get things taken care of. We need to start this city going in the right direction, because it's not right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. To the city manager or to the engineer, there has been questions raised recently that the treatment for chemicals and disinfection that's required may vary because of the new system that we're going on. This is not for the actual water bill, but it does affect the water bill indirectly, when you consider the total cost for operating the system. Any comments on that? Is this higher than last year? Is it lower? Is it going to be down? Does anybody have a good guess? Because this will be signing a contract.
I don't know how this compares to last year. I don't know if Mr. McGlade, or anybody else from Water, has that data. This is how much they need for this year, but I don't have a comparison to last year's.
Okay, so you've made the determination on the needs, that this is a good cost for their needs now.
That's correct.
That's correct. All right. Any questions, council? If not, open for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
I wish staff would keep track of the expenses, though, because this question is going to keep coming up, because people are aware that we may be changing the system. And I think there's an expectation, on the behalf of the public, that the costs should go down. I don't know that, so we should, it may be a semi-annual or quarterly report, so we will all know. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for this item, and actually several items in a row here, these are annual purchase order items. This is so that we can buy chemicals and do testing and things throughout the year. We may not spend all $99,000 that you just approved. If we only spend $30,000, then we only spend $30,000. It's just sort of a routine series of items that we do at the beginning of each fiscal year.
And to that point, if I could ask a question, that, you know, you bring that up, and I beg his question, well, why isn't this part of the process of the budget? I mean, why are we having to separately approve this? If we have to do this routinely, why wouldn't it be a part of the budget?
The budget is simply the planning document. It puts in place the accounting system, the dollars that can be spent. It's not an actual approval document. So anything we spend above a certain dollar amount still has to come back, whether it was in the budget or not. Actually, last year, we tried to have one, sort of a blanket purchase order item, that had a long list of annual purchase orders, and that meeting didn't go well. It wasn't well-received by the council, I'll say, as being as polite as I can. So we decided to split it back out this year. Certainly, we could include it as part of the budget, but then we would be making an assumption that the budget would be approved at that meeting. Typically, these things happen very early in July.
Okay. Well, I understand. I just think, and these are normal, routine things that we do on an annual basis. If it was something outside of that, obviously, I would want the council to see it, but, you know, that's, I guess, to the council's discretion.
Anything that, even if it's budgeted, if it's budgeted for $26,000, if we intend to spend $26,000, it would have to come to the council separately as an agenda item. Anything over $25,000 is above my discretion, and the department head's discretion, so it would have to come back to the council.
Thank you. No additional questions. Item D.4, Request Victorville Water District Board of Directors Approve the General Service Provider Agreement and the Annual Purchase Order Request for General Pump Company for Waterwell Maintenance for Fiscal Year 2013-14 in the Amount of $150,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
D.5, Request Victorville Water District Board of Directors Approve the General Service Provider Agreement and Annual Purchase Order Request for Clinical Laboratories of San Bernardino, Inc., for Distribution Systems Water Quality Sampling for Fiscal Year 2013-14 in the Amount of $50,000.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D.6, Request Victorville Water District Board of Directors Approve the General Service Provider Agreement and the Annual Purchase Order for SE Babcock &amp; Sons, Inc., for Well Site Quality Sampling for Fiscal Year 2013-14 in the Amount of $70,000, and $45,000 for High Desert Power Partners.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D.7, Request for the City Council to Ratify the SRO Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Victorville and the Victor Elementary School District for the period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the agreement.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Bear with me on D.8. Request for the Boards of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the Successor Agency to the Victorre Development Agency, approve, one, that the City of Victorville, acting as successor agency to the Victorre Development Agency, adopt the successor agency budget for July 1 through December 31, 2013, and, two, that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority adopts the related December 2013 debt service budget, and, three, approve the additional appropriation in the Amount of $11,178,587 for revenue and expenditures, and adopt Resolution Number R-S-A-13-006.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Question.
Keith, looking over the ROPS, of the 11, roughly 11.2 million that we're dispersing here, about 10.5 of that is bond payments, and the remaining 600,000 or so is other miscellaneous expenditures. Am I reading that correctly? Am I reading that correctly?
Largely, it's not exactly ten million dollars. It's debt service payments. The ten-point-five million dollars is a product of debt service payments plus other enforceable obligations. And the difference between that and the total amount being spent is from cash on hand.
Now, a year ago, this list was a lot longer. I'm assuming the number of transactions are reducing just normally as this thing winds down.
That's correct.
Although the debt service payments will go on sometime yet.
Debt service payments, they will continue on, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Have other questions of staff?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, presentation of timeline for Victor Valley Waste Water Reclamation Authority financial plans of our construction of subregional water reclamation plants. It's my understanding that it's going to be a short presentation. Mr. Logan Oles, I'm sorry.
I'd like to clarify if it's okay if I stay, or do I need to recuse myself since I work at VWA?
As long as this is just purely a presentation and only information, and you're not seeking any guidance, response, feedback at all from the council, it would be okay. If there's any discussion amongst council members, then the safer thing to do would be to recuse yourself.
Got it.
Is it just a pure presentation update to the council?
Yes, it is. Good evening, members of the council and the audience. It's a pleasure to speak before you today, and I will try and be brief as possible. I represent the Victor Valley Waste Water Reclamation Authority as the general manager, and I'm going to try and cover a few topics today, such as, in brief, the financial plan, the recently adopted capital improvement project, and, most importantly, the subregionals associated with it. The Victor Valley Waste Water Reclamation Authority serves the communities of Victorville primarily. You are our largest customer. The town of Apple Valley, the city of Asperia, Spring Valley Lake, and Ora Grande. We have a treatment plant located at George Air Force Base, just a little easterly of it, and we service all of the communities mentioned. In reference, we process about twelve-and-a-half million gallons per day of wastewater. That's the equivalent of nineteen Olympic-sized swimming pools, one-point-nine million kegs of beer, or about three-hundred thousand standard bathtubs, just to give you a reference. We do that for a cost of, if you purchased a gallon of Starbucks coffee for seventeen-fifty, we would actually treat seven thousand gallons of sewage for that seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Two dollars and eighty-nine cents for a gallon of milk will get you one thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-six gallons of sewage treated, and a gallon of Coke will get you six-hundred-and-sixty-four gallons, just to put it in perspective. One of the problems we're currently addressing has to do with ammonia, nitrogen. And this particular issue is one in which nitrogen breaks down in the environment and actually creates a pretty big problem for it. How significant a problem? In 2006, VWA was faced with an eighty-million-dollar nitrogen issue. Fortunately, we were able to improve our operations, and by spending about one-point-two million dollars, we actually saved seventy-nine million. The difficulty, though, is that this created only a partial success. Created another big problem. During that same period, the organization and the member agencies had expended approximately fifty-four million dollars to increase the hydraulic capacity of the treatment plant to eighteen million gallons per day. Unfortunately, the new nitrogen requirement reduced the amount of sewage that the wastewater treatment plant can process to thirteen-point-eight million gallons per day. This means essentially a loss of forty-two million dollars. So, think of it like equity in a home, all right? Increased regulation equals decreased treatment space, which then equals increased cost. That's the key. Recently, that was 2006, so in 2013, our federal permit was up for renewal. It's called a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and quite frankly, it scared the bejesus out of me when I first read it. It further reduced the nitrogen limits, and as a result, it would have created an immediate building moratorium had it been adopted. And that's something that obviously has significant ramifications for our service area and your city. It would result in no new construction, no new businesses, no new jobs, and most importantly, there would be businesses that would not be able to expand, so they would have to leave our area to hire additional staff or improve the size of their business. How did it happen? Again, the Clean Water Act, California Toxic Rule, the State Basin Plans, Beneficial Uses, these are all laws and regulations that are imposed upon VWA that we then must comply with. What can we do? We negotiate a lot. That's very critical in this process, to understand what these technical requirements mean in order to obtain the best federal discharge permit that we can to keep our costs as low as possible while still protecting the environment. Our second problem, we call it the eighty percent rule, but essentially, what it means is that once you, oops, that slide didn't transfer quite right, once the treatment plant reaches eighty percent of its design volume, you are required to design and plan for additional capacity. And the difficulty is that with the new nitrogen requirement, again, creating a situation where we now only have thirteen-point-eight million gallons per day, our existing flows are blocked by that overflowing toilet, but it's twelve-point-four million gallons. By applying the eighty percent rule, it's triggered at eleven million gallons per day, so basically, we lost about a decade's worth of effort. The third problem is that buried pipelines are nearing their capacity. I took this picture off the Internet. This is not one of our pipelines, in case you're concerned. So, how do we solve these three problems? What has been proposed thus far is the subregional water reclamation plants. These are scalping plants. What they do is they take the water and return the solids back into the system. So, just like the Nisqually and Rancho Road interchanges, as well as the Rancho Road underpass, the first document indicating the development of the subregionals was produced and given to the VWA Board in June of 1992. So, these projects have been discussed and developed for well over twenty years. Benefit number one of these facilities has to do with hydraulic loading. They alleviate the existing interceptors, and they also reduce loadings at the existing treatment plant that we have located in Victorville. The second benefit is related to organic loading, and by removing nitrogen higher up in the treatment system, it then reduces the impact to the existing treatment plant, again, located in Victorville. So, the first slide I showed you had the arrow of our VWA Victorville facility, and it's a little difficult to see, but we are planning to construct additional facilities in Apple Valley and Asperia. And what these will do is they will provide a balancing and a flexibility to our system that's not currently there. So, in a little more detail, related to the hydraulic loading, again, we're nearing a situation that because of the regulatory requirement to reduce our flows as a result of the new nitrogen limit, that also then reduces the amount of capacity there that's available to support growth in the community. Because of the facility that's located in Victorville, each of the subregionals, when constructed, traditional treatment plants, you basically have some additional capacity once they go online. These facilities will be operating at a hundred percent capacity as soon as they are built. So, what this does is it shifts the load, meaning that now, the load that would have been treated by the existing facility is being treated further up in the system, thereby increasing the hydraulic capacity. And since the majority of Victorville drains to this facility, the agency that would benefit the most, of course, would be yours. The same goes for the interceptor system, and for those in the audience, the interceptor system is, of course, the pipelines that convey the sewage to the treatment plant. If these facilities are not built, if a decision is, you know, if I'm told to do something else, basically, what we would need to do is immediately start spending about twenty-seven million dollars to increase the size of the interceptors. By doing this project and shifting the load, it delays the need for those projects, hopefully indefinitely, but we believe for at least ten years. Importantly, this will create over two-hundred construction and construction-related jobs in our local economy. Regarding the second benefit, same thing, no building moratorium. One of the issues that we were able to negotiate with the new NPDS permit was to eliminate the performance base limit for nitrogen being further reduced, and part of the assumption was that the subregionals would be built, which would then remove some of that nitrogen loading and put it up, or treated up higher in the system. The facility, as currently envisioned, would provide point-six million gallons per day of additional new capacity. What's interesting about that, though, is, again, I mentioned about the Balancing Act. It provides a lot of flexibility, so depending on where growth occurs, if Keith gets, you know, a great client that comes into the western side of Victorville that's in our flow area, we'd be able to, you know, handle that. Or if Apple Valley got something in their industrial specific zone, it's pretty easy to expand the size of the subregionals. It's actually quite easy. So, if we do nothing, what's the situation? Well, eventually, we'll reach a situation where there will not be capacity. And, of course, then we face the same situation. What do we do? As we all know, building infrastructure is very time-consuming and extremely costly. My experience in twenty years of doing this tells me, start to finish, a pretty realistic timeline is about six years. If we decide to do nothing or to do something else, we've already spent a little over five-point-seven million dollars in the planning and design of the subregionals. We've also gotten a two-million-dollar grant from the Bureau of Reclamation through their Title XVI program. That would have to be returned. And one of the issues we would be facing, although I think it's pretty highly unlikely, but the mandatory minimum penalty law may come into effect if the regional board decided to get difficult, simply because, again, once you have, once we're above eleven million gallons per day, we're triggering that eighty-seven percent rule. And most importantly, again, people continue to flush their toilets regardless. Regarding the financing, money is great right now. It's only going to be there, I think, for about another year, if you're watching the market as closely as I am. We can get the money to construct this for less than two percent interest. I'm told one-point-seven. It's a twenty-year loan. We all have been building projects, and I'm hopeful that your experience has been with Nisqually and elsewhere, that construction costs are significantly less than the engineer's estimate, so we want to continue to capitalize on that. And I'm told that we only have about this fiscal year to capitalize on that. Again, the two-million-dollar grant would have to be returned. We've been partnering with Edison throughout the design process. Due to some energy efficiency design measures that are incorporated, they're willing to give us a hundred thousand dollars to offset the cost of construction after the facilities are built. And we're currently pursuing, it's a little over five million dollars through Proposition 84 and Title XVI grant monies for these projects as well. Finally, I was asked to comment on the timeline. July, so the board meeting that's coming up this Thursday, my commissioners are going to be considering allowing me to release a proposal for the construction management assistance for this project. We're going to review the financial plan, not just for this project, for entire capital improvement plan, and then to also talk about a board workshop that's coming up specifically to focus on rates and fees associated with this. The August board meeting will be for the adoption of the financial plan and for the first reading of the rate ordinance. An important consideration in the rate ordinance is that the state will only loan us the money if the rate ordinance has been adopted. I've negotiated with them such that they will give us a one-time allowance and reduction. Therefore, if the construction bids come in substantially less than the current engineer's estimate, we would be able to go back, revise our financial plan and the associated rates and fees, and then carry that forward without violating the terms of the loan. The August board meeting would also give me the authorization to finalize the state revolving fund loan, and then to release the bid to construct the projects pending state authorization of the loan. In December, our current timeline shows receiving the construction bid and being able to award it. In January, what I would envision is that we would revise the ordinance and the associated rates, assuming, of course, that the bid comes in less than the engineer's estimates. And July 1 of 2014 is when the new rates would go into effect. Finally, these are a number of articles, which, if you have the opportunity to review, I would highly suggest it, but Huffington Post, Conference of Mayors, EPA, Rockefeller Foundation, of course, the Department of Transportation, have all indicated over the last several years that due to the recession and the depressed economy and the reduced construction bids, that now is a really good time to build these types of projects. And Mr. Dave Mornowski, if there are any questions of the council, I'd be more than happy to address them at this time.
If you engage in questions, I would recommend that Councilmember Vias have seen, so.
I don't have any questions at this time.
We're going to hear this thoroughly on Thursday.
Yes, sir, you will. And a greater detail, I want to be respectful of the city council's time. Thank you for your.
Logan, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just ask that at some point in the future, once you get this presentation as our representative on the board, that you bring it back to the council for discussion.
Good point. Good point. Thank you. Item 10, D10, this is a request for the city council to appoint a voting delegate and up to two alternates to vote on behalf of the city's annual business meeting for the League of California Cities, scheduled for noon on Friday, September 30. September 20, sorry.
I thought you said 30.
I think I did say 30. But it's September 20. My understanding is that Mayor Pro Tim will be attending this meeting.
I will.
On behalf of the city council, so.
I move that Ryan be named our voting delegate.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, now, do we need two additional, Madam City Clerk, two additional alternates?
That's not required. That is just the league rules.
Shouldn't we have at least one, just to be safe? Mr. Kennedy, are you going to be attending this meeting?
I don't intend to. That's my birthday weekend. I still celebrate.
I didn't ask for all this other explanation. No.
I like to have other plans, I'm sure.
Any other council member, Teddy?
I didn't plan to, but if I need to, I guess I would. But that's just for alternate, correct?
Well, yeah, we can have up to one delegate and up to two alternates.
Correct.
We just want to make sure that we have someone there.
Ryan, are you going to be there?
For whatever reason, I can't go. I just, there ought to be someone that's chosen.
I agree.
That would be a backup, that's all.
I think Gloria should go.
I think Gloria would be good. Well, is that a motion?
I nominate Gloria.
Second.
Have to go.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. I'm probably going to go, but I'm so uncertain at this point in time, I don't want to say anything. The next item, D11, and I also have a card from Dorothy Miller on D11. This is a request for the city council to approve proceedings with surplus water district property, APN 3072-191-07, sale to the San Bernardino County Flood Control District for the Amethyst Basin Project, and offer of dedication to the City of Victorville, and the mayor execute all the related documents. While you're coming up, oh, this is Norman Miller, I'm sorry. While you're coming up, staff, quickly, short explanation on this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this property is disposable. It's not of use to the water district at this time. However, the city needs a small portion of it for a future road, and so this would be, that offer of dedication goes to the city. However, the proceeds of the sale, compensation in an amount of eighteen thousand dollars would go to the district.
Okay. Mr. Miller, Norman?
Hi, Norman Miller, and I'm just wondering on this, was this property basically Victorville property in the past, or could it have belonged to Baldi Mesa Water?
It's my understanding it was district property, so it would have been Baldi Mesa district property in the past.
Because I was going to say, if it was, the eighteen thousand should go to the, pay down the standby fees, in my opinion.
Yeah, the eighteen thousand will be, will go to the district, to the water districts' benefits, specifically Improvement District Number Two, which is the former Baldi Mesa Water District.
Okay. And this is for the water development as far as the groundwater?
This flood control needs this parcel for their, for a basin.
I'm not quite understanding, it's for the water percolation thing that they're going to do?
Yes, yes.
More or less, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Norman, I think, Larry, you check me on this, but that's that parcel that runs right along to the south of the tank farm. I think at one time, we had in mind putting a pipeline across that parcel, but it's on the side of a hill, and it's just not really useful for anything. But it is Victor Valley Water District property.
If it was former Victor Valley, then it would go to the benefit of Improvement District Number One.
Yeah, I'm fairly sure.
Other questions?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carried unanimously.
E1, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Start on my left. We have any items from, first of all, you have any items for staff for the council agenda only? If not, Ms. Garcia?
Not at this time.
If not, Mr. Garcia? Mr. McEckern?
Only just kind of what I discussed earlier about some of these items that we've budgeted for, but then they come back to us. If they're not controversial, could they somehow not be put on consent? I mean, these are items that we routinely approve. I'm just, I'm curious if that's even possible, but I don't know if that's an agenda item or just, it's more or less a question of staff.
It's discretionary if we put it on consent or written. There's no hard dollar amount in the municipal code that says whether we do or don't. Typically, on a large purchase item such as this, we like to at least give the information, but, you know, we'll take a closer look at them. Perhaps some of them, the more routine ones, can be put on consent calendar.
Because I, as an individual council member, all of us up here have the opportunity to pull anything off consent, and some of these things that are so routine, like what we went through tonight, just, it begs that question, so I just wondered if that would be possible for staff to look at.
When it's an appropriation, it would be better to put it on the regular agenda. I'd prefer that. Consent is just sort of ongoing business that doesn't really require any discussion.
Certainly, if there's an additional appropriation, we would have it as a written item. These are fairly routine. I know in the past, many, many years ago now, the staff had been criticized for, quote, "hiding things on consent calendar," and we certainly don't want to do that.
I don't want that either.
We'll take a very close look.
I agree.
Councilmember Vias?
I'm done at this time.
Councilmember Kennedy?
The only thing, I guess, is in connection with what Ryan suggested, this issue of the subregionals at VVWA will be important, certainly for the city of Victorville, as the largest single customer, 60% or 65% of the revenues of that agency flow from Victorville residents. This whole project has a significant impact on Victorville. So we will be sure to fully vet it at this council and whatever else is required, but we'll bring it back. And Mr. Cox is our alternate, so he and I together are watching this pretty carefully.
I think it's probably a good idea just to plan on bringing it back for a full discussion in front of the council.
I agree.
In regard to some of the items on $25,000, let me back up and give a short explanation. I believe the council granted the city manager authorization up to $125,000 as a result of a lot of things. That was reduced about three years ago to $25,000. A lot of issues now are coming before the city council. I think we have confidence in administration. Most of those problems have been worked out. City council probably should consider upping that, and this would cut down on some of these normal household duties, and we may want to agendize this to consider upping it to probably a $50,000 figure. I mean, these are items that are just ongoing administration. I think that we've overcome all the hurdles and questions. If there's no objection from the council, can we agendize that for policy of the council?
I agree. I would like to see what the other cities have, because I think $50,000 is still a little bit low-
It may be.
-for this sized city. I think we'll have a lot on the agenda with just $50,000.
Okay.
So-
And I think if we could include what I was talking about as a part of that discussion, because even on those things that are routine, that might be above the threshold, that we are approving on an annual basis, because it's stuff we have to do, we don't really have a choice, it just, that type of stuff, the council still has to vote on, still can pull off consent, but again, it's a routine item, it's something that we deal with every year.
I think, too, to look at the purchasing policy and maybe revise that and see if municipal code allows for, you know, having routine items on consent.
That is currently discretionary, but just based on your comments, I've got some ideas for perhaps a policy that would include items that are either, you know, essentially single service providers, such as the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, things like that, or items that have been, have multiple year renewals that were part of a bid process, that it's simply one of those, you know, the second year or third year of a contract, it's not a new bid. I could see that perhaps being put into a policy that it simply goes on consent. Certainly, it can be pulled by any member of the council, but only if it was a new bid that actually went to bid that year would we put it onto the written.
You know, and the other thing is that I think it's safe to say we have five council members, all with solid, strong financial backgrounds. I just think where that may not have been the case in the past, I think we have that today. We study our budgets carefully. We study, you know, the financial issues. I just feel like for us to spend time on things that are trivial, recurring, and I don't mean to say $100,000 is trivial, but in the scheme of this city, does it really need our attention? So I think we should take a serious look at that.
I think the city manager has heard the message, and very good points are made, put together some of the reports on that. We also don't want to be too far out of the boundaries of what's norm for the other cities. You can find that out easily. And as you recall, there were some major, major improvements in regard to some policies and resolutions in regard to the purchasing plan, and it may need, that whole thing may need to be revised. You can report back to the council when it's convenient, but soon, so that it'll help the efficiency of these board meetings. Okay? Thank you. Do we have any reports from staff, council members? We'll start on the right this time. Any reports? Any reports? No reports? Councilmember Vias? Councilmember McEckern?
The only thing I would like to ask, this is kind of a report request, but April, good to see you here tonight. You brought up some good points. I know in other counties throughout the nation, sheriffs have sent letters to the Department of Justice saying that they will enforce the Second Amendment rights of the Constitution, and I would like to see our sheriff do the same, so just throwing that out there. I hope you would convey that message to Sheriff John McMahon, because I really think that if the Department of Justice and our current Obama administration are going to try to take away our rights with respect to the Second Amendment, that I'd like to see the sheriff enforce it, so.
I second that.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, on Saturday, July 13, 2013, I attended the Excelsior School graduation ceremony of the High Desert Young Marines. This was the first graduating class of young Marines, and it was an honor to present a proclamation on behalf of the city of Victorville. The discipline and training these young Marines have gone through has made them not just young Marines, but Marines that are ready to serve and defend their country. These young people have used their high school construct, high school time constructively, and therefore, our country will be a much better place because of them. It would be a wonderful thing if we can get more young people interested in programs that teach them how to be decent, low-abiding citizens. Excelsior School is to be commended for all the work and dedication to the students.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia, and thank you for representing the city at that event. Thank you.
You know, and just to add to that, I should say on, I want to check my date, it was the 15th? No. I attended the event at the Emmanuel Temple CME Church on Stutterwell Road, and Pastor James Markham was awarded a star on their Walk of Fame for 31 years of service to that church. And it's a remarkable story, what that man was able to accomplish during the time. And I also was able to present a proclamation from the mayor and council, and the members of the church greatly appreciated our presence there.
Thank you, Councilman Kennedy, for representing the council there. At this time, we would normally adjourn, but we're going to take a five-minute break. Will five minutes be sufficient, Madam Clerk, or do you want 10?
I believe so.
All right. And we'll have a report back from the city clerk to see if we adjourn the meeting or council it, call it again next week, because the county ballots, we have no idea where they're at or what the county's indicators are, so we will take a five-minute break at this time. Then adjourn this at a certain time. The city clerk can notify us, and then we'll call a special meeting. Is that acceptable to the council members?
Mr. Mayor, if Councilmember Kennedy would like to volunteer to help count, the city clerk could deputize him at this time.
I'd be good for maybe 15 minutes or so. I could help. I'd be happy to.
So for the public's information, they are counting those ballots for the street lighting assessment district. It's not going to, we're not going to have any kind of an answer at the rate this is going, probably for several days, and I don't even think that's known. As soon as we have that tallied, I think that it would be appropriate that we call a special meeting. You can also have a news release at that time. I think we have to certify the voting, but you will know what they are at that time?
Well, either the, if the, if it passes, then the council would adopt a resolution that orders the formation of the district. If it does not pass, then there is no action to take.
There's no act, but in the meantime, we would announce it publicly, because the public shouldn't have to come down here to find out how the vote went.
That's right, yeah.
We will announce that either way, and the public will know. If we don't have a meeting, it's all over. If we call a special meeting, then that's because the ballot's passed. We'll try to keep everyone as informed as we possibly can, and that will result in calling a special meeting. Any other comments from the council members?
Mayor Cox, I was also informed that there was a portion here where we were not recording, so I just wanted to repeat for the record-
Oh.
... that we have received approximately 8,000 ballots at this point, and it appears that about 400 of them have been counted.
Okay.
So we will continue counting, beginning at 8:00 tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much for attending the meeting. That endures our business tonight. This meeting is adjourned.